Okay, now we're recording. So there were three topics that have been coming up over and over and kids in crisis, insurance and staffing. And I know you presented to the Board of Ed and we've been sharing all those thoughts with the other members of the town council. But I think there are still some issues and questions and I sent you some in those emails. So we'll just focus on the ones that relate to what we're talking about today.
Sure.
But I think the kids in crisis will start with that. And I think the town council wanted to kind of know a little history, which you gave. And I really listened to, but if you could do it again, I think that would be helpful.
I brought my notes.
Okay.
It was really, it was really helpful, but honestly, it was so much to absorb hearing it a second time. I actually might get it.
All right, then I'll try to say the same thing. So, thank you, thank you for inviting us and I'm always glad to go through and talk about our budget. And we, while we haven't had a chance to write in to respond to the questions as of this pandemic, we certainly will do that. And, but I also having, having read through them, that through, we're comfortable talking about any of those questions. You know, it's just, it would just be the process of getting to that paper for a meeting. So we're glad that the conversation's set, we're sure for, for joining us. So, question number one around the kids in crisis counselor at SACS. And before we go there, what I did last night was just sort of back us up a little bit to give a bit of, a bit of history and then we'll get to where we are today and what we're thinking about for next year. Is that all right with?
Yep.
So, we've had a kids in crisis counselor at the high school, I believe, since at least 2008. So it's a longstanding position. When I became principal of the high school in 2011, the position was there. And that position has served us well for the years. The, when the pandemic came, the state provided us with COVID-related grants that were short-term. There was a two-year window when we received, were first notified of the grants. Things have changed and evolved over time, but initially those grants were there. They gave us very specific ways that we could use the grant. Some communities received significant amounts of funding through the grants, 150 million plus. We received about a million. So it's.
I'm sorry, we received 10 million?
About a million.
Okay, thanks.
And then just, you know, just to give the history of it, you know, we're not, well, so we, and they gave us the ways in which we could use that, those funds. And there were a couple of different categories, whatever. So as we were planning and thinking about how we could use those funds, I had a conversation with Dr. Pierce. And he'd mentioned that at a health and human services meeting, this is July 2021, they were talking about the potential benefit of a kids in crisis counselor at SACS. So we met, we talked and we decided, yes, that it fits in the way, the use of grant funding. And we said, yes, that we would be interested in running that as a pilot for two years, that we would fund through the grant with the understanding that if pilot was successful, then we'd roll over to the town and the town funded as we have been funding the kids in crisis counselor at the high school. So since certainly before my time, this was set up, the funding for the, that one position at the high school was come from the health and human services budget. So we'd never received any voice out of that or anything else. And then what happens is at the end of the year when things are trued up, it gets charged to us in kind. So it's still part of the funding received from the town to the Board of Ed, but it's done just through that as part of our, for people, right? So, but it doesn't, wasn't in our budget. So we agreed starting July 21 that we'd give it a try. We were unable to find the right person for that whole school year. So 21, 22, we looked, we interviewed multiple people. We did not find a kids in crisis counselor for SACS in that school year. The, in the summer of 22, we did find the right person. And that person joined us, the SACS staff so speedy. And we have paid, we paid that annual cost in 22, 23, the $96,000 directly from the grant as we had discussed. And then based on our prior understanding from 21, we had anticipated that the town had budgeted 1.0 in the health and human services for the SACS position for 23, 24, which is where we are this year. Right? Because we said we'd do it two years, we'd find somebody the first year and we've done it. We also had made that decision because the grant, remember, was supposed to be two-year grant. And then they did extend it for a third year. They pushed it out, but when we made those original decisions, expenditures, whatever, it was a two-year grant. So in September, we learned that the kids in crisis counselor position at high school was vacant. And so since the kids in crisis counselor at the high school was vacant and the town had budgeted 1.0 for kids in crisis counselor overall, in an email, we agreed the town would fund this exposition until they found the high school position, at which point the grant would kick up and we'd pay the remainder. Right? So we agreed that we would do that. Then the high school position was hired around November, give or take. And after, I believe, 32,000 was paid towards kids in crisis with, for the SACS position, because that had been there the whole time. After we met with a few others from the town, we agreed how to provide the funding for the two kids in crisis counselors for the remainder of this year. That's the 64 will come from the grant, 32 that they currently have. And then the town will continue to pay for the 1.0 that was in the budget, which is whether SACS or high school, whatever. We have two 1.0 kids in crisis counselors now for the remainder of this school year.
And the money is, the budget, where does that budgeted money sit?
In our COVID grant that expires at the end of this school year.
64.
And that's where the 64 is coming from. The other money, funding came from the, the town's health and human services budget, which had budgeted 1.0. So it's what they had budgeted for this school year. And then we are picking up the 64 and they'll pay the remaining 64 for the position that was hired, however exactly it works out based on the day it was hired. So we are, we have 2.0 for the remainder of this school year. COVID grant will be paying for one of those positions for the rest of the year and the health and human services budget pays for the rest.
Can I just ask a question? So that's a lot of moving parts. Thank you for going in that, you know, that explanation. So there was something at the Board of Finances that the town had paid six months of a kids in crisis counselor when there was no service. So given everything that you just said, how do you address that particular question? I mean, because in July and August, there is no kids in crisis counselor, whether they're employed or not. There's just no one at schools at that time, right? So we get those services from kids in crisis in the summer. And it was a grant, so it was paid out over a 12-month period. So, so just, I just want to clarify for anyone watching in the public that, you know, how that went, that how that transpired.
Sure. So I can only speak to what I know, right? Which is that the town has had 1.0 kids in crisis counselor in the budget for, for years, right? Since 2008 or the, or before, and they paid 1.0. That, at the high school, the position wasn't filled, but there was a position at the middle school during that time, during the school year. Now, if it's paid, I don't know how it's paid, if it's invoiced over 12 months, but I know that it's $96,000 a year. And that, if it's, whether it's September to June or July 1 to June 30th, if that 96 is spread out over 12 or 10 months, that we, we've never paid kids in crisis directly before. So that's new for us. When we received the invoices for last year, there were, I believe, three invoices of 32,000 each that we paid. But I don't know if that represented July to June or September to whenever, but I know it was $96,000. So I don't think it changes the cost. There, are we paying for the, the summer months that we're not using? You know, I don't know. I will say that if there is a crisis and somebody calls 211 or whatever needs access to crisis in the region, they are unable to do that in the summertime. But those details, I don't know. I have not, I've not been in contact directly with kids in crisis about these specifics, right? But I do know that we've had 1.0 in the district since 2021 till November, whether it was at SACS or the high school, you know, in 21, 22 was only the high school. Beginning of this year was only SACS, now it's.
Deanna, can you speak to that?
Sure. So, and this is all pre-pace funding. Just so we all make it very clear, this is all before I was even in office. I think maybe December, but I didn't know. So my understanding is that kids in crisis bill the town. So we, they, the accounting department in town was paying them for the high school position that HHS pays for. And then the, you know, the agreement was the grant was going to pay for the SACS position. The town paid for the whole semester, so 32,000 for the high school position where no one was there. The agreement with the Board of Ed is that because there has been a position at SACS for the full year, in order to pull the budget and pay kids in crisis and also get kind of reimbursed for what we overpaid, we would contribute the 32,000 that we had already paid kids in crisis and they hold on their books. And then the Board of Ed would contribute their grant money here, you know, 64,000 to pay for the SACS position that hadn't been paid through the grant. So they are netting the 96 and getting toll pay for the full year for the SACS. And then we will continue to pay as a town for the remainder of the year for the SACS kids in crisis counselor on the towns, sorry, the high school kids in crisis counselor on the town side through the end of this school year. And then, then there's a different arrangement.
Thank you.
So does it mean that's a credit of some sort?
Like we have the credit on the town side because we paid for an asset that wasn't there.
So that credit is being applied against the SACS kids in crisis counselor for one quarter, 32,000. And then the, we will, the Board of Ed will pay the remaining, the two-thirds, 64,000 out of that grant. So that will pay for the SACS. And then the health and human services threat picks up the high school position from the date that they started, whatever, appropriate then.
So net, we're paying no more than 96,000 this year as a town for the kids in crisis counselor that was budgeted.
And is there a contract that spells out?
No. No.
Will there be one?
There's a lot of things to work out with kids in crisis. But, so I, I don't really want to deal with that side of it because I think there's some, some issues we need to work out with that organization, but, but no. I'll just be quite frank.
What, what kind of issues? Because I've heard that they're open to a contract.
They might be. But I, I have strong issues with an organization that builds you and doesn't provide a resource. And, and, you know, I have significant issues, control issues. I have control issues from the town. I have oversight issues. I have oversight issues of who's watching these counselors? Who knows what they're, they're doing in the schools? The fact that we didn't even know they weren't there and they were being paid and no one said anything is a major red flag to me.
But I think it was said in the human services meeting that there was no counselor there.
There wasn't, and no one knew. What my issue is, we were paying as a town for a rep, for a resource that no one knew wasn't even there. No one notified the accounting department or health and human services. So the fact that no one knew that there was not a resource there, at least on the town side, and we were continuing to pay for a resource and kids in crisis was continuing to bill the town for a resource that they weren't providing is a major control and oversight issue in my mind.
Yeah, my understanding is a grant over 96, it's 96,000. So it was paid out every month and that they were trying to hire someone at the high school. So I don't.
That's a grant for SACS, not for the high school. They're two different positions and paid for differently. So you make, the grant is for SACS and that is 96,000 for a grant. The town pays them, not out of a grant. And that's the difference. And so that, that is the major issue I.
So what's the kind of like, what do we learn from this in terms of going forward? What's the control system that needs to be put into place? Because it seems to me that this is, you know, it was announced in all the HHS meetings that the counselor wasn't showing up. So that was, that was like, you know, is there like a form that someone fills out and says, you know, go to the finance department and say, hey, you know, we're not paying this or, I mean, what, what is the system?
It's, we've already, yes, being worked out with, with finance. I mean, there's going to be a major overhaul in how this works just on the town side for next year for the 1.0.
So, so in my view, you can't really blame kids in crisis for that.
Well, I can blame them for billing us when they didn't provide an asset.
But people bill me all the time and I don't pay it if I don't receive services. I'm just saying.
HHS never let, I found out that there was no resource there. So, you know, our accounting department would never know that there's not a HHS resource there unless HHS notified the accounting department. And I don't want to, I mean, there's all kinds of issues. I mean, we're digging into this and I don't want to blame anyone. I don't, but there needs to be a major shift. And I think there's many things that need to be reviewed. And I think we're going to take next year to review and kind of get a better handle on, you know, sort of all our human resources that we have in the schools and for HHS.
I think that's a good transition, if I can, to sort of where we are and what we think for next year.
One really quick question. And I understand you're, it's under review, Deanna, but have they responded as to why? Did they give it a reason why they were charging? And, I mean, was it, did, did crisis give it a rush amount? What's that?
We're not, we'll, we'll work through it, Rita. It's, it's, it's been very convoluted and we're still working through it.
Not true. That is not true.
Jen, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, it, that's a, it's just, it's. Right now, it's an accusation out there. I think we do need to clear it up one way or the other to know exactly what happened. So I understand you're reviewing it, but at some point, probably didn't get what that story actually is.
Eric, you have a comment?
Yeah, I just want to go back to, and I'm new to all of this. And I'm glad that we're going to look at the 32,000 dollars that was paid that shouldn't have been completely raised, shouldn't have been paid. I don't know what all that was surrounding, but I'm glad we looked into it. We're going to fix that and fix the, the system. Dr. Litz, you mentioned that during COVID or right after the town, did the town or the county public schools get a grant from the state of about $1 million?
The Board of Ed.
The Board of Ed. So even with two of these counselors for two years, there's still 600 grand to be accounted for. Where does all the rest of that money go?
Oh, that's a whole nother discussion. I'm glad to have it. And we have broken it out. We've had all types of tables and. And just, just so you know, the, so the, the kids in crisis counselor at the high school that's been around since, for at least 20 years. Again, that, that has been, that's a longstanding position that was not in discussion around addition of one or X. And it was because we had it, but, you know, we, and the understanding was that we knew they were short-term grants back in 2021 with this, all of us being, you know, given, being given to districts and how we can spend them. So that's where we thought, you know, it's a good idea to run a pilot for a couple of years, see how it works, see if it's the right move for us, and then make a decision around, do we continue this position or do something else? So it was always meant to be a pilot as we did this over at middle school. As we ran a couple of things. And then we had to make some tough decisions about, with the, the red sun setting, what do we continue in our operating budget? Or what do we feel like we have covered elsewhere that we would not continue? Because we, when we used the grants, we didn't want to create a fiscal cliff by just hiring a million dollars worth of staff. And then two years later, saying, oh, we need an extra million dollars in a budget to cover all these new stuff. So we really were thoughtful about things like the summer academy that we ran, some testing that we did, some other services that we provided using that, that were services that we knew would sunset. And then there's some, a couple of ways that we hired some staff. And we made some decisions around some that we continued and some that weren't. It makes this year's budget trickier than normal, just so you know. Because in our staffing plan, we include everybody, all the positions grant-funded or elsewhere and operating. And so now when we look from the year-to-year budget, it may look like an addition of, you know, X, but it's actually an operating budget of X plus whatever positions we're continuing. So it complicates that decision a little bit more, or that conversation a little bit. Does that help?
I don't. Complication is slim again, I understand.
Yeah. It's our job to try to cut through it. Make everything as simple as possible, but no simpler.
Rita, I'll call you one second. I just wanted to say about the, the lack of a contract actually is in kids in crisis's defense in a way because who knows what their terms are. So, I mean, in their defense, maybe that's their understanding. But on the other side, where's the services for the, for the kids throughout the summer? So are they, I mean, this is my, my question. Are they the only organization in town that offers counselors? And is there one that might do 24/7 for the whole?
Well, I will say kids in crisis again to that school question. That's, it's an hypothetical question. Kids in crisis counselor has provided excellent service for us. They have, they've provided a service that, that value-add for our kids, for the school, and they've done it for a while. One of the challenges when you outsource this position at all is turnover and relationships and evaluation and those other pieces. At the high school, it's worked quite well. Right? So now, so I'm moving into next year a little bit. At the middle school, we found to get, it's, this is nothing about the person in the role. The person's doing a fantastic job, but we're really looking for that person to operate more like a school social worker, like we have them operating than we do with the high school kids in crisis counselor because the needs are different. The, primarily what the kids in crisis counselor at high school gives us is a, a place that kids can go to talk to somebody confidentially that's not their guidance counselor, their school counselor, and not the person writing their college recommendation, not somebody that's going to be sitting in their classroom later on in the, whatever that might be. So it gives them that little bit of separation, which is important. What Susan Bliss, Dr. Bliss actually went and ran some focus groups with kids at both levels, at the high school and middle school. And really, the, the students that she spoke with at the high school were all echoing this practice, right? That if we have somebody that comes up, we don't want to talk to our counselor about it. We still have somebody we can go to, maybe kids in crisis counselor. And, and they're glad to have it there and they feel, you know, that it's affected that. In the middle school, then it was a different conversation. And then really it was a lot more overlap between the role of the school social worker and the kids in crisis counselor. So I know I'm going to next year, but as we consider.
Before you do that, let me talk to, let Rita have a chance to add to that.
All right, Rita.
No, and actually you're kind of answering it. My, I mean, the question was really, were we satisfied with the, the services we were getting at the high school level? If we were, if we were satisfied with the kids in crisis role that we were getting at the high school? It sounds like we were satisfied, there was a value that, there that we need, that we felt we needed and we were getting. And so that isn't, so that isn't, I, I just wanted to establish that. So that isn't in question, really what is in question right now is not changing that, not taking that away, not questioning that necessarily. It's the, just the SACS role that we're thinking about now, changing, right? You're not, you're not worried about oversight or evaluation for the high school kids in crisis counselor?
You know, the high school is set up differently. The partnerships, the team comes together differently, the way they work at art is different. But even the proximity of the counselor to the, or the kids in crisis counselor, to our counselors and nurses, other things. So it's a, it's a different setup. So no, I don't, I don't, it's, and I don't want to say worried about supervision evaluation. I just see that as a strength of in-house versus. But yeah, I think that there are some things that need to be clarified for sure. And we're hearing them now. And I think that the other one on the table with, you know, kids in crisis, with the first selectman, with a few other folks, and really hammering out an agreement that's very clear and prescient, I think is important. Because we all, we would always do that. I think part of this is the legacy of this program at the high school, being 20-plus years old, I believe, means that just to overturn, you know, it's was a different relationship then. We're in a different world now. And I think that we do need to sit with them and work all this out. And as, as you mentioned, I don't imagine there'll be any issues with doing that. I think that they are as pleased with the relationship at a high school as we have been for years. And I think it's, it's a very much a mutually positive relationship on behalf for our kids. And their, and their mission is the right, is a, a lot of the mission, right? They're here to help kids and help families. So we want to.
I'm sorry if I'm laboring this. So, but again, I just want to confirm, there's no, there isn't a concern right now with the high school position? And we're focusing on SACS? Or am I hearing that you want to reevaluate that as well at the high school?
So there is no concern that I know of for the high school position right now.
Okay.
The, the either having it or the person in it, both positively back on both things.
Okay.
Now, right, so high school, so going to SACS, the question became, again, it was always meant to be a pilot. And the question became, how can we best serve the students that we have there? And after thinking about it, talking to the team, talking with others, working through, we really feel that, I feel that, the, what's best to meet the needs of the children there is for us to have a 1.0 social worker who works for the district. Now, just, I'm going to go back a little bit and I hate to confuse things. I don't, I'm not. So pre-pandemic, we had 2.0 positions at SACS doing the kind of work I'm talking about. 2.0 social workers.
Before you go on, right, I just want to say, no, we're just leading into the next topic. I just want to make sure we're moving along, so.
I'm still, I'm still kids in crisis, but yeah.
But yeah, we're done, we're done with that part of kids in crisis.
Do you want to see if there are any questions before I do?
Does anyone have any questions before we move on to?
Hillary.
How this impacts staffing? Go ahead, Hillary.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. If I heard you correctly, Dr. Litzie, one of the issues with the, the gap in services at the high school with kids in crisis was an inability to find someone to fill the position. How confident are you in the district's ability to find someone to fill the middle school position outside of using an agency like Kids in Crisis?
Okay, so you're bringing me to where I was going, so.
Oh, perfect.
Hillary, I'll get there. No, it's perfect. It's actually the perfect.
Did you plant, did you plant your?
Thank you. So I'm going to, I'll answer my staying theory, but we'll get there. So pre-pandemic, we had 2.0 FTEs, two people doing this work at SACS. Post-pandemic, like today, we have four people today. So we have the two positions we had. We have an additional school social worker who was hired through those COVID grants that are sunsetting. And we have the kids in crisis counselor. So today we have four. What the budget next year supports right now, before we go to Board of Finances hopefully, is two positions at SACS with the understanding that the third would be filled by the kids in crisis counselor at SACS. Now, given all this conversation we've had and what we're thinking about, and the question really was what best serves, serves the needs of the kids? What we are going to be asking Board of Finances to do is to add $68,000 into our budget proposal so that we can keep the third social worker position at SACS. So we had two, we went to four, in 24, 25, we have three. And that's, that would be without the kids in crisis counselor. So, and the reason why we feel that it's a better move is it does give us stability. We have somebody in that role right now who's doing a fabulous job. And again, both people are doing a great job, the kids in crisis counselor is, this person is. So it's not, this is not personnel driven at all. And I, you know, there's that, no, I mean, no, I don't make decisions based on personality. I make decisions based on systems and services and outcomes. So it gives us stability because it's somebody who works for us. It give, it gives us the ability to supervise and evaluate, train, and build capacity on a, on long-term with this person in the hope that they would be here to develop relationships with kids and families and staff. And we just see that as more value-added at the middle school than going through an agency, whether it's Kids in Crisis or anybody else. And you asked Hillary to your question, we, somebody is serving the role right now. So our original budget actually had us eliminating that role. And now we're saying is we'd like to keep that role in, give that person in that role who's doing a fabulous job and continue for that one.
So just, just sorry, just so I'm clear. So we, we have four now under this proposed budget. We would go down to a head count of three on this particular issue or profession.
We had two pre-pandemic. We were four using the grants and we're looking at three in 24, 25. With the understanding also that, you know, if needs emerge that are not being met, then in another few months, we're back in the budget cycle. So we can have that conversation as well if the need arises. But we feel pretty confident, given the work we've done, the research, the focus groups that Dr. Bliss has held with students and otherwise, that this sets us up well going into next year.
But Dr. Litzie, that third, you would have lost one of them because of the grant. The grant is going away, so they're now paying for a grant-funded position, so.
The plan was always to have three there.
Right.
Right? So the plan was, even in the, in the Board of Ed budget as it stands today, we were going from three people working for us in, in this area to two because the kids in crisis would be the third. So we were going to, we're going to have three people. So we weren't going, we're going to have three people, we're saying I'd rather have all three of them, our employees, instead of adding two employees and one outsourced.
But you had two outsourced this year?
So remember we had, we had the COVID grants.
Yeah.
They're ending at the end of this fiscal year, they're done. We can't, there's no more money left. So.
One position and KIC was the other position.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm trying to follow the bouncing ball.
I had a whiteboard, I could sketch it out for everybody.
I think the important thing to know is that based on your budget request, they are now the same as where they were going to be. But instead of having an outsourced social worker, they're going to have an in-source social worker. That they will have, um, development and control over versus an outside company that we just pay and don't have any control over as, you know, the district.
Do the hours of service, uh, are they equal to what Kids in Crisis could offer?
Well, we always have access to the eight hundred number. That's, that's open to anyone. You don't even have to be a Kids in Crisis subscriber, but we do fund Kids in Crisis. That eight hundred number is open to anyone.
And we do still have a relationship with.
Whether you.
Right, and we still have a relationship with them through the high school, right? So again, we're only returning to where we were pre-two thousand twenty-one with Kids in Crisis. We still, again, we want the counselor at the high school, they've done a great job and it's a value that we need and a kid's benefit from. Uh, so we're, we're just returning back to, we, again, we ran it as a pilot, we learned from the pilot and we're making decisions based upon what we learned. I think that's what part of our responsibility. Not everything is out of it all the time. We want to make sure that we're making informed decisions.
Just, just to wrap up, and I think you just said this, but I want to hear it again. There will be no diminution of services to students at Saks in the few, in this coming budget.
This budget is whole as presented by the Board of Education with three point O social workers at Saks.
And you think that does it? That that's, that's, that meets the need?
We believe that that's the right model for staff, given, given where we are. Again, we had a fourth this year with Kids in Crisis, so I don't want to say there's no diminution of services. But I will say that given what we know, based on the research that we've done, students will be served, uh, well and appropriately with the staffing model that we have, that we have put forward.
Hillary.
I, one last quick question. It's just something that's been ringing in my ear. When, when we talk about control and, um, evaluation over a mental health provider. I, I would assume that doesn't mean any sort of breach of confidentiality or, uh, topics that the social worker is not allowed to talk to students about or things like that. I, I don't understand.
Absolutely not, Hillary, absolutely not. Yeah, this is, you know, it's, um, it, the relationship between our counselors, counselors and our students, our families is all guided by all of, and by everything else. And yeah, they would never violate that. They do, there was a question I saw about, um, mandated reporting and requirements around mandated reporting for Kids in Crisis versus our folks. And they are, they're similarly trained, the expectations are the same about mandated reporting to DCF. If and when they were here, things about, you know, students are dangerous to self or others, or students being harmed, all of those pieces. So the training is, is, um, similar, if not identical, and the expectations are equally, um, high and appropriately high. That DCF will be notified in a bright way. So then we don't lose any of that, um, kind of oversight or protection over children, one way or the other.
I think there is one fundamental difference in, um, is that Kids in Crisis is confidential unless a child is at risk of harming themselves or, uh, others. So there is a difference in the service provided, um, to a middle school student, right? Because a social worker is not confidential. So if someone goes to Kids in Crisis, whether they're in middle school or high school, it goes, uh, it, it's confidential. If they go to a school social worker, it, I'm assuming it goes in the school record and it's a different kind of situation.
Not always. I mean, it's, they, they may have their personal records that they keep for whatever reason. But students can go to their school social worker, otherwise an expert to be kept confidential. They can be, as long as, again, they're not, you know, self-reporting or not threatening themselves or to anybody else. And, you know, with all the different criteria, obviously, you know, wow, that means they'll go through. But, uh, but yeah, we do have confidential conversations with kids through our counselors by our side.
Okay, I didn't know.
Where appropriate.
Because I think parents need to know what they're giving up. If you're giving up a Kids in Crisis counselor at the middle school, you're giving up that confidentiality piece. And I know, I've anecdotally heard that some parents don't want their kids going to the school social worker, they prefer they go to the teen top counselor. I understand it's a pilot and, and I, I totally get that. But post-COVID, there's a, you know, mental, uh, illness issues are starting to creep into that population, you know, eight to fourteen. And it's, it's starting to get much more prevalent. So I'm, I'm just curious to know what the focus group said. Because when I looked at the utilization numbers of the teen top counselor in Saks and at high school, they were very similar.
But the issues were very different.
Yeah.
We looked at the distribution of the types of issues that kids were going to the teen top counselor at Saks. It was predominantly peer issues, which is very different than what was being dealt with at the high school. So I think you also need to kind of have all pieces of what they're dealing with, um, at both schools.
No, I did notice that the peer-to-peer conflict was like fifty-three percent or something. So you're saying that a school social worker would be better able to deal with that than a teen top counselor for some, I don't know, just.
If not better equally.
Equally.
Right, so.
And can, sorry, sorry to interrupt, but I, I took a look at this. There is a, there is a Connecticut general statute that deals with confidentiality rules for licensed clinical social workers, assuming that's what we would hire, I hope. Um, and it's, they're bound by the same confidentiality rules, harm to self or others, if they're subpoenaed in a civil lawsuit that the student is bringing. Um, a couple of other, other things that are pretty standard for mental health providers.
Yeah, all, all mental health providers have those, um, you know, limits on confidentiality, Hillary. It's not just.
Yeah.
What I'm talking.
No, I understand. Yeah, I get, yeah.
You know, going into the school record, it's a different issue that I'm talking about.
Well, the.
Fair point.
I'm sorry, but apart on, on feedback from the kids and how they're using the counselors and feeling that, again, with the offerings being equal. Having someone on staff gives us added value to that kids, including the, um, we anticipate being able to have somebody on staff for a long period. And turnover, when I, when I was at the high school, we had the same concept for a long period of time, but since then, there's been a bit of turnover. It's, as you know, it's a very challenging market, it's hard to hire folks into these roles. Uh, and we, you know, we found some good people and we were lucky we went along.
Yeah.
Janet.
Hi. Hi, Dr. Letzey. Um, quick question, from a kid's stand, standpoint, do they see any difference between an in-house versus an outside agency? Or is it the same? Do they, do they feel any more confident going to a Kids in Crisis counselor versus a social worker? Or is it, is it no different?
As far as I know, and again, from the feedback there, from Dr. Bliss, they really, we're talking about ten-year-olds, eleven-year-olds, five-year-olds. So no, I don't think that that nuance is really part of the thinking so much over there. I think that, uh, if they were working in fundamentally different ways, it might be more so, but they're really not. So I don't know that kids say, well, this person is Kids in Crisis, this one works for the district, somebody else, this one's the guidance counselor. I mean, that's, I think these are probably much more adult nuances than, than things that impact the kids in there.
And are we in fact saving money by going in-house versus outside agency? Is it sixty-eight versus ninety-six or is, is the sixty-eight or whatever it is not including benefits?
So I do believe we are saving money in that, and that, you know, the, definitely with benefits, but sixty-eight's the salary. But as you know, being self-insured, that's all a different thing. It's not really a one-to-one, how the pool works and all that stuff. Um, so yeah, I mean, it's, it's less than ninety-six thousand, you know, it's, uh, we put in sixty-eight. Uh, and that's, you know, a little bit higher than what we typically put in for a new position for somebody's in the role now and, you know, what have you. But, uh, but yeah, I mean, it's, you could say we're saving money, but then last night they asked, does that mean your budget goes down? And it doesn't mean the budget goes down because the money doesn't exist anywhere. So just to be, again, just an over complicated, complicated thing. Um, but yes, on the whole, and actually we found that in-sourcing a variety of different roles strategically does help with the budget. You know, I mean, there's definitely always conversation about, you know, staff increase, why is the staff increasing? But really, it's, that's only one thing to consider. And the other piece is to look at your overall for people expenditures and costs in relation to others. And so, you know, we have been strategically increasing our staff, but we've been doing it as we've increased or modified or enhanced programs. And as a result, we've kept, kept kids in district, provided them with great education and actually driven some costs down on the whole, which, uh, I think is a good story to tell.
Well, and yeah, I think it's important to think about, you know, in a, in a time when mental health professionals are, you know, really at a premium. Um, the district will be paying that individual more than what Kids in Crisis is paying that individual. Kids in Crisis has a lot of overhead. And so I would argue, we would probably get a more, uh, a more experienced or a more high-quality, um, counselor in the district. When the district, um, hires, trains and oversees than if we have this outside agency that really is paying these younger counselors. And they are very young, is, uh, the, the two that I met at a recent Behavioral Health Alliance meeting, very young counselors.
Okay.
Um, Christina has a question and then Rita, and then I think we'll move on for Kids in Crisis.
For you guys, for Kids in Crisis.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to understand, is the salary for a social worker in this capacity only sixty-eight thousand?
So the social worker is hired on a teacher's contract, right? So they're in the, they're certified by the state of Connecticut, they're part of the NCEA.
Right.
So their experience would determine exactly where they're hired based on staff. As a, as a teacher.
And I assume to be a social worker, you have to have a master's.
Yeah, and be, and be certified in Connecticut.
Yes, it should seem like very low salary, whether we can get a hold of them.
Yeah, very hard to hire in mental health.
Insurance.
Oh, there's a big threat, so.
Can't imagine LCSW with a master's working for sixty-eight thousand.
Yeah.
Well, but then there, you know, there are other benefits, of course, being a school system and, you know, hope that over time as their salaries increase and the other. And my, you know, as additional certifications, others all contribute towards that. But yeah, that's, that's the most, so.
Rita.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm curious about like referrals to outside resources. So is there a difference between like a Kids in Crisis counselor that can refer or that would refer to outside resources versus a school counselor? And the reason I'm asking that is because I know like, and this is like from a personal experience, the, and I don't know if it was a school counselor. But the school official felt, did not feel it appropriate to refer a child to outside resources because of potential legal liability. That was, that was expressed. I'm just curious, like, is there any limitations from a school counselor referring to outside resources? Like, I think this person might, this child may need these services or may benefit from the services versus a, a Kids in Crisis counselor.
So it, it's actually a great question, calls one other thing to mind. But no, if somebody asks for a referral list or referrals, we'll give them a couple of different options. We won't say these, this one, but we will say, you know, here are three that we had their success with or something like that. Uh, if they, if, uh, the, another part of the thinking around this is that the urgent assessment program that we have now over at Silver Hill, right? So yeah, you don't, you don't think about any of these things in isolation. It's all kind of a network of support for kids and families. So that does have a role to play in that sort of, uh, it's not the, the, you know, nine-one-one call immediately, the two-one-one call immediately. But it is, we have concerns and, you know, we can refer folks to there, uh, for sure as well. The, we probably would not have a school social worker calling family to say, I think your kid needs counseling, I think your child needs this or that. Uh, but they would, prob, probably that's not happening, um, unless there are, the, but if parents talk about services with them, then they can engage in that discussion. So there could be something there, Rita, it's probably worth me learning a little bit more about. Uh, but to an earlier point, um, I wanted to make briefly is the model right now is that we have the one point O Kids in Crisis counselor at the high school. Five days a week, you know, a hundred eighty-two days a year. But there may be a model where we show that service eighty, twenty, maybe they're one day a week over at Saks and four days at the high school or something else. I think this all has to be part of the conversation that we have with Kids in Crisis to see if there's any value to, uh, to doing something like that.
Thank you.
So Rita, should we switch gears here?
Yeah, I think, I think we've beaten this horse.
Does anyone have any, any questions on staffing? I think we kind of touched on staffing and we gave a lot of questions to Brian, which I think will require probably more detailed written response. So I think we'll move past that. So insurance, does anyone have any questions on insurance?
Okay.
Well, I, I mean. I haven't heard a story on that one.
I have two second waiting time.
I mean, honestly, just hearing all the emails that have been.
A lot of questions from, from citizens in town and I applaud you for your patience and your, your determination in answering those questions.
Thank you.
I don't understand.
Those, those questions have been asked since I was on the board, right, in two thousand thirteen.
Yeah, and, and, um, I don't understand all the intricacies of different insurance programs as administrators. Um, I've got to trust that you and your team, uh, and board of finance understand that better than the average Joe on the street, which is where I fall. So that the self-insured program is actually a more cost-effective program for the Canadian public schools at this time. As I learn more and get more educated, I may grow with that understanding and change my mind. But for now, I, I, it's a lot of work.
I know that in the past, we have had Joe, your, what's his consultant, consultant, come in and have a conversation about how it works as a self-insured. And maybe it's time to do that again, schedule a meeting.
For some counseling.
Yeah, yeah. And it's usually an open discussion as to how it works and to answer any questions.
I, I think that's a good idea because even with a visit to the board of finance, because Joe came to the board of finance, we spent about ninety minutes going through all of it. But it was very detailed, precise, specific actuarial language for the board of finance. This might be a half, just a half step back about philosophy and self-insurance and, you know, it does, just one way to think about it is the, um, and, you know, this goes in the category of things they need to teach you in super-independent school, right? So you learn along the way. Um, but when you, when you self-insure, you're going to have some good years and you're going to have some years that you're, you're paying more. Because you really are, you're accepting the responsibility to pay the claims of the participants, right? So, but what you don't have to pay for is the margin that insurance companies built into their plans. Because you can, while we'll win some years and lose some other years, insurance companies are always going to build a margin, they're not going to lose, right? They wouldn't last very long, they did. Um, so you do take on that risk and then you figure out ways to mitigate some of that risk with some of the reinsurance and things like that that we use. Um, over time, and Joe has done an analysis of this for us and I get the information, but I'll have him share. Um, but we've saved well in excess of ten million dollars over the last, say, eight, ten years, uh, by a couple of, you know, decisions that we've made by being self-insured. Had we been fully insured, we wouldn't have been able to, um, save those, those funds because we would have been paying the money to the insurance company. And just a very simple example that I think is easy to, uh, wrap, wrap your ass around. You know, we, during the pandemic, when that hit and everything shut down, um, we didn't spend the money out of the account that we had for our insurance. So we effectively saved over two million dollars just that one year because of that. Had we been fully insured, that money wouldn't have saved something with us, we would have got to still pay our premiums, pay insurance company, they would have. And so it's, and that's just one easy example, but there's lasting examples. And so we've, over time, we always, in negotiations with our teachers, look to, uh, sort of tighten up the plan in reasonable ways. And so we've done things such as we have a co-pay for participants when they reach their deductible. So it's a high deductible healthcare claim. And, and this, we're one of the only board events in Connecticut that I'm aware of, um, or municipalities for that, for that matter, uh, that have this co-pay after which is a deductible. And that alone saves us well over three hundred thousand dollars per year in the cost of our plan and through Cigna. And when we do our projections, all those things. So it's those kinds of modifications we look to make over time through negotiations with our teachers, with other, other staff, that help us to continually, um, evolve the plan. The, there are some towns that use the state partnership claim. Uh, this came out a few years ago, our first selectman was chairman of the board at the time, and we looked, we took a good look at it. And we made a decision that this wasn't right for the king. Uh, we also, I've done a little bit of research around collaboratives. And we went, actually, a couple of years ago, I went to a lunch meeting with a collaborative, uh, group of the folks I run it to learn more about. Apparently it seems, seemed to be the time that the collaborators are really beneficial to small groups that are looking to broaden their pool. But for us, our costs are our cost, you know, what we pay for our, our claims is just going to be what it is. There's nothing, we can work to try to building. work to try to building changes of behavior that lead to better outcomes. But ultimately, whether using Cigna or Aetna or United Healthcare, whatever you're using, whatever they negotiated with their partners is the rate that you're going to pay for whatever services. Uh, we did get hit pretty hard in the pandemic with a few very significant health issues. We had one individual with a double lung transplant, we had a heart transplant, we had, uh, and we had a few, um, deaths of members in the plan for your teachers. Um, all of that served to really hit our reinsurance, our stop loss very hard. Which is why we really focused there, and how, what, what can we do to try to break those costs down? So it happened in the year we got the card, we paid about seven hundred thousand dollars for a policy that paid us about two point five million. So we won that there. But now the, the insurance companies, of course, they have all that data, they want to recoup those costs. So that's where we're, when we talk about stop loss and other things.
What is your stop loss?
So we've got two, right? So we have, so we have the pool of funds every year to pay our claims, and then we have an individual stop loss. So that's for any one individual plan participant, we've got about sixteen hundred of them. If they, we, the plan pays for them up to three hundred thousand dollars. And then anything over three hundred thousand dollars is paid by that individual stop loss carrier. We also have an aggregate stop loss, and that's when we talk about the corridor and reserves and all that. That's going from a hundred percent of our anticipated claims to a hundred twenty percent. That's our corridor, because once we hit a hundred twenty percent, the aggregate stop loss carrier pays a hundred percent of the claims. We've never hit a hundred percent, I mean, a hundred twenty percent. We typically often hit a hundred percent, or we haven't hit a hundred twenty. And so that cost, I mean, hundredth is significantly less by a factor of ten than the individual stop loss, because we do hit that annually. And it's just a question of number of people who will. Now, and not, you know, just remember superintendent, not insurance consultant, but, uh, had enough conversations with them to know part of, first of all, nationally, all of the large carriers are struggling with higher costs than, than in the past, so they're trying to figure this out. And they will, I mean, they've got lots of really good minds working, working problem. Um, but what's hitting us now is what's hitting everywhere, and it's a good problem to have, just not financially. But people that are, um, being diagnosed with illnesses that led to, uh, shorter lifespan now are living quite a bit longer thanks to you know, new meds, yeah, biologics and other medicines that weren't available just a couple of years ago. So you're going, you're, somebody who wouldn't be on the plan for very long now could be on and still continue to work and be there and be healthy enough to live a good life, but if they may be, it may cost five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars a year in those biologics, in those prescription meds. So that's given a plan, again, it's a good problem to have for the individual, and it's a good problem for society, it's tough financially, so we're just trying to be aware. And the same goes with other prescription medications that are available that are now helping people in the right ways that just weren't available just a few years ago. So that we do a deep dive on our insurance planning performance annually with Cigna, we spend a day together, they buy us lunch, it's very nice. And, uh, we look at these, sort of the trends, what's happening, and really try to continue to plan around, sort of plan design of that, but really around behavior. So we have a wellness committee that's in place. Spending with a couple of years, does an amazing job with our staff, and we put an employee assistance program in place, an E A P. And we really worked with Cigna to say, we want this available to everybody in our district, whether or not they're on the Cigna insurance plan. So any employer we can publish schools have access to E A P. And do, so we've done things like that to try to, um, some behavior coaching, some other things. So based on the medication that somebody might be taking, Cigna will reach out to them, offer them a coach, offer them support, do a variety of different things to help. So we've really
Use Tom, Tom and Rita have had their hand up.
Okay, I'll take it for her.
Well, I thought, I thought Dr. Lutzey was doing really well, because in the course of his discussion, he answered one of my questions.
That's why I was wondering, obviously.
All right. So, Dr. Lutzey, my impression has been in looking at this for the last five years, um, and listening to similar presentations, uh, that if you cut through the complexity, uh, the most important question is how much people are spending on medical care. Right? That, that, that's, everything else revolves around that. This year, that, and in past years, we if I, if I understand it correctly, we've actually been fortunate enough or clever enough that our trend of, of, of growth in healthcare expenses, uh, claims reimbursements, uh, has been lower than the national average, right?
It's actually quite a bit lower than the state average.
Right.
If you go back, turn it out, we're, again, millions below where the state average spend would have.
So we pat ourselves on the back. Uh, and we've also been able to look at, at the, um, the realities of volatility. Things go up, things go down, we've, we've talked about reasons for that, and it all sort of made sense. However, this year, it's a spike. It's like, it's like new territory. And so the real question is, and maybe you touched on it with the evolution of medical technology. Uh, is this the new normal? Because it's a lot more expensive, even given all those other factors, uh, changing, uh, the, you know, the employee's use of the plan, and more intelligent use of the system, and whatever, all those positive incentives. But it was so much this year, you have to wonder, is this a new normal? Is this pretty much where we expect to be?
Yeah, you know, I think only time will tell. We hope not, but you're exactly right. And what we've seen is where we used to trend on average about one point two or so, one point three million a month in our spend, we have some months here where we're one point six, one point eight, and those, um, were not the months that we would expect to be that high or, or higher. Um, so we really are watching it closely to see, does this, is this a new trend? Or is it just, um, something, is this something I discount for? Then one of our challenges in our plan, and I won't go too long, but one of our challenges in our plan is the three hundred thousand dollar stop loss is a high number. It means any one participant can cost the plan three hundred thousand dollars. So if you have uh, two or three people on a thing you didn't expect, you didn't budget for to hit that, you know, that's close to, it's a million dollars. It's not going to be nine hundred thousand dollars if it's just three people, they didn't account for in the plan to hit that. So um, that's, it's always a give and take when you print that number. Because of our experience, it would be cost prohibitive to bring it down. Uh, we're paying an awful lot for it already. But that is, that's an element of risk in our plan that, um, if you were to design a plan from the ground up today, you wouldn't start with three hundred thousand dollars individual stop loss. Uh, you might, you know, you've got, you've started.
Isn't that what Joe said at the meeting? Was he saying there are different levels of stop loss that that
Yeah, and he's asked for what.
That's how it's out there fifty.
Right, Joe was asked to look at it, but I think the finding, but I think the finding will be that it's cost prohibitive.
Yeah.
And, uh, and yeah, he did say that three hundred were amongst the highest that he knows of. And so we are, so again, um, I'm, I'm, if you know what the Dunning Kruger term is, I'm being very careful not to be on Mount Stupid, where I know a little about something and think I know a lot, okay? So I wanted to just put that on the table. Uh, but, and Joe's reason to sit on the needs he taught me was that you have to look at it in two, two pools essentially. Those that, um, are below fifty thousand and those that are above. And what he found was those that were above was, was around four percent, three and a half percent or so, and was driving about half of our spend. So our plan is running very well for our non-high, high dollar claimants. And so really your leverage points and your continued refund is, what do we do with those high dollar claimants? And how can we, whether it's behavioral or otherwise, try to limit those costs? And so that's where we had some conversation about, is there a way that the reserves can help with this, the, the stop loss? And maybe you can increase the, the, even up to four hundred, if you had enough reserve to pay the three to four, and that might save you an office. We're, we're meeting within a couple of weeks to work out those details. But, but I do want you to know, given, or you've mentioned the emails, et cetera. We are, um, I don't want to use the word obsessed, but I'm pretty obsessed with this around insurance and all, because I recognize it as a large driver in one budget. And we have spent, always, I've spent a lot of time identifying ways we can drive down operational costs to ensure that the funds remain in the classroom with kids, in schools where they're best served. Right? So that's where we've done energy initiatives, we've done moving lighting initiatives, we work with church, all of these things that we do, we do it in service to kids and the investments in classrooms. So this is as important as everything else, because better we manage this, make sure that we can continue to make the investment where it pays us.
Okay, Rita, and Hillary has her hand up, I'm not sure if she's.
I think that might be an old moment. Um, so here's what I, I really appreciated the last email that you sent Brian, which really explained kind of the strategy and the approach that, that you took to get to the decision we made about, um, insurance. In my opinion, I'm not an expert, I, I'm not an expert in insurance, but I, what I do appreciate is doing the research and having a strategy, right? Looking at the different options and having a, and, and coming up with a strategy that you think is best for our, you know, our community, which might be different from what other communities are doing. And it also, by the way, proves itself over time, because you might have an up or a down year, but really, uh, the true test of whether the strategy is working is more than just one year, right? It's seeing over time how it is performing. And so in my opinion, I, I have plenty of information that tells me that we've done the due diligence, we've, we've, we've chosen a strategy that we think is effective, and I I'm seeing evidence that it was a good strategy. And so that's where I sit right now. Um, could there be other strategies that we go after? Yeah, maybe, but I don't know that it's clear that one is definitely better than what we're doing right now. So, I mean, I, I guess I appreciate, um, the fact that you've gotten that expertise from, I guess that was the, the gentleman, Joe? And that you've done the, the research and, and I'm, I'm, yeah. So I mean, that's where I sit from all, from all of that.
You know, and I will, I'm not to belabor it, and thank you, I'm grateful. The, um, when we looked at the state partnership plan, part of what factored into our decision making was, you know, as a board of education, we play the, this is the long game. You know, we don't make decisions based on a six month or a twelve month thing, we know that we've been here a long time, we're going to be here a long time. And so we have to create strategies and give it time to work through. We can't be bouncing all over, it's for the idea of the moment and lose sight of those longer term goals and the direction and the, you know, sort of the purpose that we have. So that's, I think that, that's an important distinction, you know, for me certainly, that, but the options that are available to us today are based on the decisions we've made over the last ten years. And every district will have a different set of options that they can choose from, based on the decisions that they've made. But I'm telling you, the consistency of the direction that we've been moving in has served the district very well and will continue to. So it's either, we are always looking, how can we improve it? Uh, but we're also not just jumping on a bandwagon because it's a fad and six months from now we're going to be.
Right.
One thing, I was wondering, as a result of all those emails, Cigna is the manager of plan. Do you ever look at comparing other managers? Like, is there some benefit to putting R F B out for other managers of the plans to see what that would do? Not that you want to do that every year, but like, you know.
We have, we've looked at it. Um, the thing is that relationship with Cigna is mature. So, Prince, I mentioned the E A P. Right? So you're, another discipline, we have a hundred percent of the, um, our X reimbursement comes back into our plan. We had to negotiate that, but there are lots of things I've had that we've abolished it. It's also, um, you do a disruption analysis. As you know, this is, insurance is a benefit through the contract that our teachers and all our, uh, employees receive. And if you, if you switch carriers, then it's a disruption in service for folks that can be, um, different, be expensive and difficult to navigate as you make that transition. Because you've got grandfather people into places that may not have agreement with that insurance company, so you're absorbing those additional costs and other things. So there are some things built in the system that make it very difficult to make the shift. We did look at it, and I can go back, I don't know the, I don't remember exactly the details, but we did ask Joe to look at what it might be. He knows people, obviously, this is what he does, so.
That, that would probably be helpful to hear, just what it might look like.
Yeah, I can, I can certainly ask him to do that for us. Um, one of the challenges, just to, again, knowing, um, I'm no expert, but having spoken with some colleagues who have gone out to bid, changed their character, they get an excellent rate in the first year. And then they completely recoup its losses in the same way. So for us, we're not fully insured, so it's really just about the network. So it's not that we're, if we're fully insured, and it's a twenty million dollar plan, you know, maybe they're going to save a percent, which means it's a lot of money, whatever. But for us, we don't, we're not paying that money to Cigna. We're paying Cigna, the administrator will be, use their network and they'll G D A claims.
Right, so it's their negotiated rates versus.
Yeah, so it might be twenty fifty thousand, I don't know exactly the number, but it's not millions of dollars. So even if they save a percent, you might save a couple of thousand.
Two hundred fifty thousand.
Well, I don't look at it, but it's What's that?
A month or?
No, 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 for the year. Yeah, and it might be more than that, I have to look, but it's not, it's not the number, it's not the seventeen million we're talking. That's the actual money that goes to the doctors and the places to pay the claims. We're really just talking about the administrative. And that's, again, the advantage of being self insured, that we hold the funds, we hold the money. But if you're a, if you're fully insured, uh, it there may be more savings there. Because we're only using Cigna to use their network and do G D A claims and to, you know, help us to manage all that. You really, you're not talking about a significant number. Even if you get an amazing savings rate, it's still only on that small portion of your spend in insurance.
How often, how often, if ever, is there an audit on Cigna and the claims process isn't done for the board of education?
So we've done two different audits. We, back, um, you may remember years ago, there was a question about folks who were working for one of the talent agencies still on their insurance plan?
Yes.
Yeah, so when we saw that, we said, okay, we're going to audit ours right now before anybody asks us to. So we did. Um, and we, we actually was surprising, they, we hired the company, they said, don't worry, we're going to charge you, maybe it was thirty five thousand. We didn't save more than that, because we're going to find a few people that shouldn't be on the plan, and you're going to save money. We didn't save any money, so it was, we were really, you know, very good placed with that. Uh, so we audited our, our utilization, and that came out clean. We then, um, in response to some of the questions that Rich was asking, we audited, uh, Cigna in our claims. And what we did, we did that, I mean, I haven't looked at it in a few years, but essentially they sampled the claims, and they take it through from you know, notification to Cigna to through payments, through payment through, and they, they do a sampling of all of that. And again, it came out, uh, that things were running well.
But that was how many years ago?
Uh, it was pre pandemic. You know, I think I just marked time with that these days, but, um.
So what, what rings a bell to me, I think I, you said a little bit further, that your claims had increased to one, to one point four, one point seven, there's creeping up. So maybe that is the time now to do a, an audit on the sampling claims.
Yeah, I mean, again, and there's a cost to it, but you can absorb that with the plan perhaps, and I'm, I'm there's no, I'm always happy to do it, you know, information is always good to have. Uh, the, I as I, as I mentioned, there's, I don't think there's a silver bullet out there, but just to be able to, you know, sort of do it periodically over a couple of years and get a cycle of doing it, there's no one there.
I think, uh, it's six twelve, and to give you all a break for your next meeting, I think uh, any other questions that anyone has, just put them in writing and, um, we'll go from there. Anyone have any quick final notes? Mike, did you want to say anything?
Okay, so, um, with that, do we have to make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Yes.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
Making a motion to adjourn. Call them, favor.
Well, thank you all, thank you, David, and, uh, listen. I'm sorry, this is Sean, Sean.
Yeah.